Pastor Carruthers and Friendship Round of Applause. Counselors, we move to our announcements. Do have a couple announcements. Mayor Pro Tim and then Councilmember here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I would like to remind everyone that St. Constantine in Helen Greek Orthodox Church will be having their annual spaghetti dinner. It will be November 20th and it will be at St. Constantine in Helen Greek Orthodox Church. If you have not got your tickets, you can buy them there. There will be, we are known for our spaghetti dinner and there will be lots of Greek pastries for you to be able to buy there, baklava and all the good things. So, little fun fact, 66 years ago, my father went to the Greek church and met his wife. It was their first date. It was the first spaghetti dinner in our church. So, welcome everybody and hope we see you there.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember here.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two announcements. One, I would just like to say congratulations to the men of Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Incorporated. They just celebrated their global Founder's Day on November the 17th, which was yesterday. And a great group, a group of young men, an organization that believes in mentoring others, that believes in giving and uplifting others, that believes in scholarships, and just an organization that has all forms of uplift that they give and support throughout the globe. And so throughout the globe, Omega Sci-Fi celebrated their Founder's Day, November the 17th, 1911, which, as I said, November the, I'm sorry, November the 17th, which was Sunday. Also, I would like to announce that on November the 22nd, Kingdom Impact Global Ministries, right there, 2503 Markerson Road, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 28301, they're having their annual Bread of Life food pantry, food ministry, food giveaway. It's always a great event. I've been able to help support and participate with them and we're asking you to come by. Try to get there early because you know how it is when you do the drive-throughs and the food giveaways. It's, you know, it leaves early. That's going to be November the 22nd. It begins at nine. I would say get there close to about eight, maybe seven thirty and get in the line. And they will give out their Bread of Life food for as long as it lasts. And we're looking forward to seeing you there. I'll be participating. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Councilmember here. And congratulations. I can't believe I'm saying that to the purple and gold, but thank you for that. Councilmember Thompson and then Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, on behalf of myself and all of my colleagues, I would like to wish everybody a wonderful and happy Thanksgiving. We will not see you before Thanksgiving arrives. And please be safe. Please do not drink and drive. And please, if you are cooking, stand by your pan to make sure that you are safe. And if you are not cooking, you can always sign up for a meal at Operation Turkey. You can go to OperationTurkey.com, sign up for a meal, or sign up to volunteer either on Wednesday or on Thanksgiving Day, Thursday. They will be serving one in my district at Harvest Family Church at the corner of Strickland Bridge and Fisher Road. So if you're looking for a meal, you can come to Harvest Family Church at 6575 Fisher Road and receive a meal. Sign up at Operation.com. Thank you. Have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson. All right. Mayor Pro Tim, you did yours. Okay. All right. Any other announcements, councilmembers? All right. Seeing none, we'll move to our recognitions. Oh, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. It was quite a bit. I didn't know if we were going to have time. But if anybody with children from the ages, or youth from the ages 13 through 18, November 21st, from six to nine, at the First Baptist Church, they are hosting, well, Beyond the Bars is hosting a youth empowerment. They're going to be providing workshops, resources, and also the Live Like Genesis Project will be partnering with them. So please come out and support. And last but not least, I wanted to recognize, I don't think no one, our fire department is in here, but I just wanted to thank them for their service. I know, I think it was last night or yesterday morning, an individual, an individual was caught in a house fire and they went beyond measures to ensure that that individual was out. And I believe he was in a wheelchair. So I just wanted to highlight our fire department. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin. Counsel, moving to proclamations, National GIS Day. Ask that for National Geographic Information Systems Day, if they could meet me at the podium, the recipient of the proclamation.
Whereas National Geographic Information Systems Day is celebrated on the third Wednesday of every November, and whereas geographic information systems, GIS, was first developed by Dr. Roger Tomlinson at the Canadian government, the first ever GIS Day was held on November 19th, 1999 during Geography Awareness Week. And whereas GIS is the technology that is used to create, manage, analyze, and map all types of data. And whereas GIS technology allows us to see and model complex relationships and patterns between people and places and better understand how the two interact and exist within the built and natural environment. And whereas the city of Fayetteville has maintained its commitment to utilizing GIS to inform decision-making, better serve its residents, to make useful geographical information open and easily available to the public as a platform for innovation. And whereas GIS is everywhere and more important than ever, the city council commends the work of our IT department. We extend appreciation for their vital role and our IT department manages in daily operations of our city. Now, therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the city council and more than 208,000 residents, do hereby honorably proclaim the 20th day of November in the year 2024 as National GIS Day. And witness thereof, I hereon do set my hand and cause the great seal of the city of Fayetteville to be affixed as 18th day of November 2024, Mayor Mitch Colvin, City of Fayetteville.
I just wanted to thank city council and the mayor for recognizing GIS and also couldn't do anything without the IT team as a whole. And thank you all.
And also, at this time, if I could have the Public Services Department look like they're representing in all the red, if they could meet us at the podium. In the Public Service Department, we wanted to make sure that we showed our appreciation and gratitude for the hard work that you all have did representing the city of Fayetteville, Western North Carolina during the extensive hurricane, Hurricane Helene. So if you all could come forth, we've prepared some city coins for you.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have the names. I'm just going to read out the names and how you. So in front of us, we, and again, thank you for all your hard work and dedication. Craig Allen.
As they call your names, yeah, y'all can just go that way as we call your name.
So I just, did Mr. Allen want to get a picture?
Yeah, we'll do it at the end.
Okay, okay. James Hunt.
Sir.
Jonathan Parrish. Salvador Gomez. Elaine Hartfield, Hartfield, I'm sorry. Hatfield? I'm sorry, they have, yes, Hatfield. Elaine Hatfield. James Volk.
James Volk.
Thomas Perez. Andrea Brown. Robert Hughes. Julian Locklear. John Harding. Austin Tyler. Eric Sean Ceros. John Glover. Anthony Manus.
Mathis.
Mathis. And John Daniels.
Yeah.
And if I forgot something, in your name, sir? Did I forget somebody?
Okay.
Did I forget?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, ladies. Again, thank you to Public Services, a critical part of recovery and representing us in Western Fayetteville, Mayor Esther Manheimer, and I'm sure the residents of Western North Carolina and Asheville and Buncombe County appreciate your services. So, Counselors, we move to the next item of business, moving to the City Manager's Report. Mr. Hewitt.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Very brief tonight. As always, I encourage citizens to sign up for the City Manager's Newsletter, which goes out on Friday afternoons. And you can do that by going to the City of Fayetteville's webpage at the top and clicking subscribe. If you did and you are a member, you are already aware that loose leaf collection season began in Fayetteville today and will run through January 21st. We'll start with ZIP Code 28306. Who's that? 28306? Okay, starting out west this time. And we end at 28301 and 28312 in middle of January. But that information about loose leaf collection is available on the city's website and was also included in the manager's update this week. And with that, sir, that is our update for this week.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right, Counsel, move to item 6.0. If we can use our system, motion to approve the agenda. All right. All right. So we have, Councilmember Thompson, is that a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
All right, seconded by Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, looks like. Just you down after that. All right, discussion on the motion to approve. All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for action on that. All right, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. All right, moving to the next item, the public forum. All right, per the city council policy 120.9, this is a time that residents may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. The public forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes each to address the city councils on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. No time will be yielded to another speaker, by another speaker. Individuals speaking at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk's office no later than 5:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. When the city clerk calls your name, please approach the podium. Please clearly state your name and the address for the record. When the light on the
Thank you, guys, thank you ladies. Again, thank you to Public Services, a critical part of recovery and representing us in western Fayetteville. Mayor Esther Manheimer, and I'm sure the residents of western North Carolina and Asheville and Buncombe County appreciate your services. So council, as we move to the next item of business, moving to the city manager's report, Mr. Hewitt.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Very brief tonight, as always, I encourage citizens to sign up for the city manager's newsletter, which goes out on Friday afternoons, and you can do that by going to the city of Fayetteville's webpage at the top and clicking subscribe. If you did, and you are a member, you are already aware that loose leaf collection season began in Fayetteville today and will run through January 21st. We'll start with zip code 28306, who's that? 28306? Okay, starting out west this time, and we end at 28301 and 28312 in middle of January. But that information about loose leaf collection is available on the city's website and was also included in the manager's update this week. And with that, sir, that is our update for this week.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. All right, council, move to item 6.0, if we can use our system, motion to approve the agenda. All right, all right, so we have, Councilmember Thompson, is that a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
All right, seconded by Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, looks like. Just you down after that. All right, discussion on the motion to approve. All right, council, I'll look to you for action on that. All right, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. All right, moving to the next item, the public forum. All right, per the city council policy 120.9, this is a time that residents may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. The public forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes each to address the city councils on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. No time will be yielded to another speaker, by another speaker. Individuals speaking at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk's office no later than 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. When the city clerk calls your name, please approach the podium. Please clearly state your name and the address for the record. When the light on the podium changes from green to yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. And when the light changes to red, that means your time has expired. Any remaining speakers on the public forum list that did not have an opportunity to address the city council will have the option to have their name placed at the beginning of the next scheduled public forums list. So with that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am, we have five speakers signed up for this evening. Our first speaker is Mr. Robert Walls. Mr. Robert Walls. Not present. Mr. Charles Matthews.
Mr. Charles, good to see you, sir.
Same to you. I'm Charles Matthews and I live at 3618 Tenon Court, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I've been living in Fayetteville off and on since 1959. Most of you wasn't even born, but no problem. I feel happy about that, my age, I'm eighty-seven years old, and I won a turkey shoot tournament at Fort Bragg this past weekend. I'm here tonight to thank all of you for the job you're doing, so I'll let you know it, and you've done a good job. Thank you for the job you're doing, and your various departments. I would also like to thank Mayor Colvin for taking the initiative to get PWC out to my property regarding the manhole leak. PWC were there in a couple days to access the situation. The manhole is located in the middle of Big Cross Creek on my property, just before Crossing Country Club Drive. It would be best to check this manhole after a storm, when the water is above the manhole. This is when it leaks and potentially become a health hazard. I thank the planning department for making plans to put a walking trail in a predominant black neighborhood and end up expanding to Fayetteville State. I would also like to thank the engineering department for preventing the flooding of the library again. The street next to the library has been closed for over a month. I'm sure that's some expenses, hard labor. The effort and $7.5 million spent in Rip Raffin Rocks at Heritage Place is a start at the tail. Hopefully, the engineers will work their way down the Merk, Merks Road, Fayetteville State Men Dom, and to the head, Rose Lake. Again, I would like to thank the city for its influence over PWC. We want the city to continue working with PWC to resolve the manhole hazard problem. And I'd like to thank all of you again for the job you're doing. And like I said, most places I go, I usually be the oldest in there, but I don't mind it. I'm eighty-seven years old, and I plan on being around a few more years, so I wish you guys keep up the good work.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Charles, and you look good for eighty-seven, and you shoot a, you shoot scratch in golf or better, so. Want to be like you when I grow up. All right, well, thank you for that. Madam Clerk, next.
Yes, sir, our next speaker is Mr. Michael Austin.
Good evening, Mr. Austin.
My name is Michael Austin, address 524 Junior Court. Good evening, city council members. My name is Michael Austin Jr. I'm a Fayetteville native, born on a military base, and I've had the honor to live off Yacken Road in both Kittenade and Old Panarosa. I stand for you today, I stand before you today as a differently-abled jaywalking pedestrian. In 2007, I lost a dear friend to vehicle manslaughter. On November 1st, 2007, Fong Tran was struck by a vehicle on Bonanza Drive as he crossed the road from our soccer game. He was succumbed to his injuries on November 3rd. I stand today and remorse of him. As an eighth grader, all I could do was mourn, cry with my friends, and press forward. I would later learn that the citizens of Fayetteville advocated for a stoplight for years and that the Department of Transportation decided that the traffic volume wasn't, didn't warrant one. So what does warrant a traffic light? As I walked down Sky Bowl Road from a fundraiser at Chipotle, I encountered two crosswalks. One in front of the movie theater on Lake Valley Drive and one at the intersection of Yacken Road and Lake Valley Drive. This is one of the many examples of how unsafe it is to walk in the city. I recently discovered that we had a pedestrian plan meeting in August where the citizens were able to have input and have a survey. I didn't discover it until last month, so I missed it. And for the citizens that are unable to attend and don't have internet access, how are they able to input their information? I asked the city to just be more mindful about how the citizens are able to input their voices and to make sure that their voices are heard, and that it shouldn't take a life to make a light. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hewitt, any, any advice for citizens for these public meetings when we're making policy changes like that? If they missed the meeting, was that the only meeting for the pedestrian safety plan? Or what are some other options so that they can have their voices heard?
They can always email us anytime, and Michelle is here as well for our council request office. And at any point in time, people can, and she's handing him her card now at the moment to be able to share that. But if people, even if it is something that we're not talking about at the moment, if people will just share their concerns with us, we'll try to route them in the right direction.
Okay, and just an update, because walkability has been a topic of concern, we want to give an update real brief about some of the walkability plans that we're doing. So the meeting that he referenced was a meeting as we continue to lay out our walkability plan and that the bond was passed. Can you have somebody from Public Safety talk on that a little bit?
Right now, I'm not sure who's available to do that.
All right, we'll circle back, I know that there were a lot of citizens concerned on that. All right, Madam Clerk?
Adam is available, sir, if you.
So staff is working diligently on those. We have kind of two pedestrian plans, you know, we're working on. One is our school connectivity and then our larger pedestrian plan that needed updates since 2018. Has some recent updates on the school connectivity, it's moving just a little bit ahead of the larger plan. We're happy to help any citizens know how to be connected to those, but we're looking to come back in the spring to show the council the progress on those.
I'll save my question for a later meeting, but thank you for that. All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, our next speaker is Ms. Sherri Smith. Sherri Smith. Our final speaker is Mr. Chilenko Hurst. Mr. Chilenko Hurst. We have no further speakers, ma'am.
All right, thank you for that. Thank you to those who participated in the public forum. Council, as we move to item 8.0, are the consent items, entertain a motion for consent? All right, so Councilmember Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to pull for an up and down vote, 8.0A3, 8.0A4, 8.0A5, and 8.0A6.
So is it motion to approve all of them with the exception of 03 through 06? Councilmember Green?
Yes, I'm sorry, I made that motion.
All right, so it's motion by Councilmember Green to approve with the up or down separate votes on those items mentioned, seconded by Councilmember Hondros. Any discussion on that? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes to approve the items not listed in the motion. Who are we missing?
Approval of consent, you confused me.
Ma'am? Oh, okay, all right, so we good? Okay, all right, motion carries, those voting in opposition, Councilmember Davis. All right, moving to item 8.03, Councilmember Green.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was a motion that to appropriate, it's basically completed projects. Some of these date back as far as 2015, where we need to close them out. I had no problem with closing those items out. I did not want to also include a request to authorize that allocation of $100,000 to the Mabel Smith project. I would like to see that done in a separate manner. We had a lot of discussion upstairs about it. I'm not sure where we legally rolled out. There was lots of back and forth, and I was, but we've repeatedly been told that we've had enough money to finish the project. We were still pretty much confirmed with that upstairs, but this was contingencies on some furniture and fixtures for the Mabel Smith project. I personally can't vote yes for this without some amount of detail on where this money has been appropriated, so.
All right. Any other, okay, so Councilmember Har, you had a question?
No, I was, no, but I guess you're waiting on staff.
All right. Well, she just made a statement that, about it. Are there any other comments or follow-ups on that, or Councilmember Hondros?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think to piggyback on Councilmember Green's comments, there's projects in this tranche, I guess we'll call it, from various funds, including the Parks and Rec Bond, Stormwater. I think it would be good, I think the citizens and taxpaying residents of Fayetteville would appreciate a short presentation, kind of explaining and outlining all of these and as we discussed upstairs, possibly looking at improving the processes moving forward so that as projects are completed, they're closed out perhaps sooner than what is in this, in this tranche. So if there's no other questions or comments, I'm prepared to make that motion.
All right, so just to, prior to that, Councilmember Hondros, and I'll go back, and just for the listening audience, this particular item has remaining funds from different projects over the last several budget years that during the process of an internal review found about 3.8 million, wait a minute. Two, two point, yeah, roughly, what a total amount found, was 3.861, is that? Yeah, so roughly, a little over 3.8 million for projects that will go back to the various funds that they came from, so whichever fund it was for, so in other words, if there were monies left over from a completed project, that money now has to have official council action to move back to the general fund or to the Parks and Rec Bond Fund, so. So Councilmember Hondros, what's your, what's your motion that you're proposing is to do what? And I see you have a question from Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My motion would be, prior to just approving this tonight, having it come back where staff can give us a brief breakdown of which funds, which projects belong to, and, you know, how we got to where we are today, just a little more information on this newfound money that we didn't know we had.
So what you're saying, in other words, is that you were asking to table this until that happens? Or you would vote, make a motion to approve it, and with the condition that that also happens?
Well, I was hoping to have it come back to us at the next council meeting with that presentation.
All right, Councilmember Benevente, you had a question? Comment, rather?
A question, Mr. Mayor, thank you. City Manager Hewitt, I'm trying to understand whether what Mayor Colvin said was true, if the, there's leftover money on a particular project, does it have to go back to that very specific department? Or is there potential that council actually could say, it doesn't automatically go anywhere in particular, we say where it goes?
If it is general fund, it would go back to general fund undesignated. If it were Stormwater, it would go back to Stormwater undesignated, and then it would have to be appropriated for another project. Some of them appear, it may even be state, minor, minor areas, but it would not be spent until council re-appropriated. It's, all this action does is to basically say, the projects are completed, we have ensured that we have paid all of the bills, there's no additional warranty items, I guess, which are remaining outstanding, and that these funds can be turned back into the city, to the big general pots of money for reappropriation whenever council so chooses.
Well, if it was a Stormwater project or a Parks and Recs project, as it stands, if we approve this, it automatically goes back to that designated area. Now, does it have to go back to that designated area?
It, it, once it goes back to the general fund, it can bounce somewhere else if council so chooses. The companion to this, which I think Councilmember Green was mentioning at the beginning, is that in addition to asking council to close these projects which are completed, we're also asking you to appropriate $100,000 of those closed funds for contingency and for furniture fixtures and equipment for an ongoing project. So that, that is, that is exactly how the other monies that would be going back, or all of the money would go. It would go back to the fund and then council would have to reappropriate it for a particular action. It would not be available for, for staff to spend until council does so.
Yeah, I think that, you know, if there's a $3 million accounting that still has to be done, that we do that before we start distributing it piecemeal, because I think that's when we lose things in the cracks or that we stop paying attention to where the rest of the money goes once we, you know, let the little things go by. You know, I think right now, the city of Fayetteville has got a lot of questions about how we go about these big projects and exactly how we spend money on these big projects. And if we can't be clear right now with each other with what that looks like, then how can we possibly appropriate a single dollar until we do? So, you know, I'll join in with Councilmembers Green and Hondros on wanting to not do things at the speed we usually do, because when we did that, we ended up making some mistakes. So maybe we need to actually change how fast we move along with these things.
So I have a question for you, hypothetically, legal question about these funds. So if I, if there's remaining money from a Parks and Rec Bond proceeds, can it be spent on something other than Parks and Rec Bond?
Your GO bond offering said that you would spend the money for parks projects.
So it is dollar-specific, so if I have, if there's leftover remaining money from FY17 for a Stormwater project, which is a separate enterprise fund, can it be spent on something other than Stormwater?
I would say no.
Okay.
And I would even go so far as to say that, again, any reappropriation of a project has to be done by council, and that you establish that by a project that you stand up.
So I think two things, one, and I don't know if this is the intent of Councilmember Hondros or some of the other council members' question, but is the issue that this is wrapped in, two actions wrapped into one item? In other words, if it was separated to, that there was a vote to reappropriate the money or to put the, close these funds out and put the money back to the original source, you know, the legal source, not the necessary project, but enterprise funds go back to the enterprise fund that it came from, Parks and Rec project from bond funds go back to the GO bond pot. And then you're saying a separate action for the overage or for the surplus for the project? If that was separated, is that the issue? Was the issue that you want to look at the entire process?
Well, both, and I'm willing to concede and approve the closing out and have the presentation for the latter, as you suggest. I just think with some of the stalled projects that we have going on, I think residents have questions. And when we see projects that began, you know, several years ago, that may have been closed out prior to the last fiscal year, and we're just now closing them, I think that raises questions, and I think those questions deserve answers in a transparent presentation.
And Mayor, if I can add this as well, we would be happy to do any which way council would like. I don't believe that there is a need for us to do this tonight, this can, these funds or projects.
Well, I think, I think we're going to get there.
I was going to add in that where we can, we would be happy to come back with a presentation as well to talk with you about what it means to close a fund, because I think that is something that would be great for us to share.
Well, I appreciate it, but I am a lot more thrilled that you come back finding 3.8 million than you do asking for 3.8 million. But, so I would like the money to go back to the account, and then I am open to a conversation, maybe to improve the processes about how it is that we can put these funds back in the pot faster. But council, I'll leave it to you. Councilmember Hondros, you, Councilmember Har, you had a question? And then Green, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Let me make sure I'm understanding the maker of the motions and our city manager. So you're saying then, are you all saying then, we don't move to close out tonight until we get the procedure that you're requesting tonight, which I fully understand and can support? support? Or, or are we saying, don't close it out at all until we come back with our new procedure?
I haven't made the motion yet, so I could make it whichever way there's consensus.
All right. Councilmember Green had some input on that, and we'll see if we can get there.
I'll probably address what Councilmember here is asking. When I first spoke about this upstairs, it was simply and wholly because I had a problem with the two things being together, because they appeared to be lumped together, and I wasn't comfortable with that. So I am completely comfortable with closing out those items to close out, and then we can come back and have the discussion about the allocation and how we want to handle that. Because I completely want these projects to get finished, but I want to do them with the transparency and the understanding of the city and the residents, so that they understand what's going on.
Okay, so just let me follow up some understanding, because I do want to support what you're saying. Our manager said at the beginning of the item, that these items have been completed, but we were just closing out the additional funds that were left, correct? Correct?
Correct.
Okay, then I, I support, if the motion is made, that we go ahead and close out, and in the future, whatever the process you're going to be asking for, I feel like I can support it. Whoever's gonna make the motion.
All right, so, so just to kind of memorialize all of this, if I, if I hear it correct, I got you, Councilmember Benevente, you had a question, but I just want to make sure we, because it's been a lot of discussion. So one is the consideration, Councilmember Hondros said he could potentially be open to it, Councilmember Green reaffirmed that, that there could be a motion to close these items out, that the, that the funds could go back to their prospective sources, and general fund for general fund dollars, and a separate action, if necessary, to appropriate, which was for a specific project, which I think would, is a later project coming. So you all were okay with separating that, or the potential for it, is what a discussion is. So is everybody following that? That, that instead of it being two actions in this, it would be, it would, it would be one, or you would separate it? Instead of being one action, it would be two. You basically vote to put the money back, and then if there's the council consensus to vote to do something after that, it'll be a separate vote. Yeah, so that's on the table, but Councilmember Benevente had a question, and then I'll see if we can get there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Manager Hewitt, I mean, this may further solidify why we're separating these two things, because I feel like you said yes to my question, then you said yes to the mayor's question. But is it because he said GO bond specifically when it came to Parks and Rec? Or is it because truly, the monies that are gonna go back, if we do not take action to their respective pots, that we could have room to say they can go elsewhere? Or is it case by case? Can you tell me right now, is it true that if the full council takes action to say this dollar figure goes elsewhere, there's room to do that? Or is that gonna be part of the bigger presentation on this topic?
To be very clear with you, if it is a GO bond project for Parks and Rec bonds, your GO bond authorization, it has to go for parks. And any appropriation of that money, if it goes back to, to that pot of money, would have to be appropriated by council, very clearly.
Appropriated by council.
To do anything else with it.
When you say anything else with it, you mean still within parks?
For parks. The public safety component that we have, you have wide range within the public safety arena, which I don't think we borrowed any money as of yet, we've just done a reimbursement resolution. The same thing for the housing, and the same thing for infrastructure. When you borrow the money for that, it has to be go back, it has to be spent for what the citizens authorized you for.
But these projects that we're closing out are not just bond projects.
They're not, and so that goes, but you can use that same logic for any of the others.
So if it's not a bond project that has been, the language has been pre-established to have to go back, we can again, say where it goes?
You, you're the only one that can say where it goes.
Okay.
And you do that, you do that in two ways. You do that by adopting the CIP for any project over $50,000 for multiple years. I can't spend money otherwise on that, for a, for a project. You do it in your Stormwater budget, and you also do it in your annual appropriation for, for, where you adopt the budget.
Well, I think that the outlets and the furniture from Mabel C. Smith is one that I think is very likely to, to get what it's supposed to get. I think still, though, for it to be fair to all 3 million, we say where all this money goes, more or less at the same time, because I don't think that we should be, you know, maybe saying, I don't know, what's easier to get done now, versus that what have, might have more debate around it? You know, maybe we should have that discussion simultaneously, so that, again, maybe there's some projects that can be leveraged with that approval of some easier ones. So, yeah, I think there's a bigger conversation to be had about that 3 million dollars, that any, none of it should really be appropriated today.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Benevente. All right, Councilmember Green, you pulled this item, so I'll go back to you. You wanna make a motion?
Okay.
No pressure over here?
No pressure. I'd like to make a motion that we move to, let's see, Mayor Colvin, may I help?
Yes, I'd love your help, Madam Attorney.
So, looking at the agenda item, there are two ordinances, so you just want to move the council adopt the capital project closeout ordinance?
Okay. There you go. I'd like to make a motion that council move to close out the capital project closeout ordinance, 25-31.
All right, this is a motion by Councilmember, motion by Councilmember Green, as stated, for a motion to close out the capital project ordinance, and then it was seconded by Councilmember here. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, are we still asking staff to come back with a presentation on where those funds went back to, when we close out these projects? How many projects and the funds went into Stormwater, for example? How many went into parks? How many went to?
So you can, you can cover it in her motion, if she agrees to a friendly amendment?
Yes, I'd be happy to make that amendment. I'd be happy to make that amendment.
All right, so the amended motion is to approve the closeout of the capital projects, also with the direction to staff to come back with more specifics on what, the origin or the, the location of these dollars that have gone back?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so and that's still a second, you accept that? All right, Council, I'll look to you for action on that. Okay, speak with your button.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right. All right, motion carries, 10-0. All right, Councilmember Davis.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I would like to move that we allocate the $100,000 from the capital project fund to the Mabel C. Smith Park.
All right, this is motion by Councilmember Davis, seconded by Mayor Protem, discussion. Okay, you press your button? I don't see it. All right, Councilmember Benevente.
My understanding is that we just agreed on a consensus motion a moment ago, so I'm trying to understand if we're gonna have a majority of y'all say yes to this dollar figure, then what was the point of view, making the impression that you were gonna have a consensus motion with the previous one?
Madam Clerk, the previous motion was to close out those capital projects with the instruction for staff to bring back specifics on the location of the dollars, is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. All right, Council, we have a motion and a second. Look to you for action if there's no further discussion. Who hasn't voted?
Councilmember Hondros.
Councilmember Hondros. All right, Council motion carries, 6-4, those voting in acquisition, Hondros, McNair, Green, and Benevente. All right, moving to 8.084, Councilmember Green, I think that's yours.
It is. I had a couple of questions, probably real quick, easy questions, we just ran out of time upstairs. This project, I learned a lot about bridges when I was reviewing this, but can somebody from staff just answer a couple of questions for me? Do we have any idea, after the DOT does do the repairs that they've agreed to, do we have any, any idea how much the rest of the repairs will cost us? Because out of everything I saw, I didn't see anything about that. We had like 67 pages, but there was nothing about cost.
So Department of Transportation will be making the repairs on the underside of the bridge. Everything on top of the bridge will be included in the Skybo Road sidewalk multi-use project, so we will actually be doing, putting a multi-use path over the top of that bridge. I don't have that actual itemized broke out, but the estimate for the overall project, which is putting sidewalk from Ridgewood Court to Morganton Road, and then a 10-foot multi-use path from Morganton to Swain Street, is about $2 million for construction.
Okay. Do we have any idea how many pedestrians you think will use this?
I don't have that.
Okay, I'm just, I was just curious. Thank you, that's really all I needed to know.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Green. Any other questions? Councilmember Hondros?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Who currently is responsible for the maintenance of this bridge?
The Department of Transportation.
So if we were to approve this tonight, once the construction is done by NC DOT on the bottom, and once the city completes the project to make it, convert it to a pedestrian bridge, who would be responsible for the maintenance of the bridge at that point?
The city.
The top and the bottom?
Yes.
And we don't know what that's gonna cost?
I, I think the cost will be minimal. DOT is repairing the substrate, substructure walls and painting the underside of the bridge. It is important to note that when DOT goes with their roadway project for Skybo Road, which could be 10, or 20, excuse me, 20, 30 years from now, that bridge will actually have to come out because there's not enough space, and when that Skybo Road bridge is rebuilt, the multi-use path will be included with it, so you'll have one structure that would be maintained by DOT, so, but we would maintain it until then.
And then, thank you, and then, last question. So we say we're converting to a pedestrian bridge, would it, would it be pedestrian only, or would it actually be multimodal in the way of bicycles?
Yes.
Pretty much anything that's allowed on the sidewalk?
Yes, it'll be a multi-use drive.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember here, you had a question?
No, sir.
All right, Councilmember Green, is that a question? It was your issue, is that, all right, so I'll go back to you.
Um, let's see. I would like to make a motion that we have staff bring this back to us with information as to the maintenance cost on this.
Okay, is there a second to that? Seconded by Councilmember Benevente, any discussion on the motion?
I, I, I have discussion.
All right.
So I, I don't know if I need to bring you back up here. So what I'm hearing about this bridge is that it is gonna be a pedestrian walkway with sidewalks for people to be getting to and from, is that correct?
One second, ma'am, if I can ask Byron as well, this, is this the railroad trestle?
Yes.
This is the railroad trestle and the chain link fence, is that correct?
It's the railroad trestle.
Okay.
So I, I, I'm just kind of confused a lot, because in the past two weeks, all's we've heard about is us being an unwalkable city. We have put, and we were the most unwalkable city eight years ago, we came in and started working and working and working on it, and now we have somebody that's walking around with, you know, a jug of milk, saying that we're still the least walkable city, and here we are, talking about pedestrians and sidewalks, and I think that just goes with the territory, and I, I can say that us that came back from Tampa, there was a sidewalk on every street, and I will tell you, their streets were cleaner than some of the carpet I've seen walking into buildings. So we have to invest, and, you know, taking care of what we have is part of the business. So, anyway, with that being said, thank you for answering my questions.
All right, and, and so I do have Councilwoman Thompson and Benevente.
I just wanted to add about DOT. DOT is doing major projects in District 6, and consequently enough, the exact same project with the bridge is being done on Strickland Bridge Road. They are building a bridge to go over top of Strickland Bridge Road for the 295 extension. And I asked them, why were they putting sidewalks on the bridge? They said, because that is the future of what they're doing. So when you want to put in sidewalks, the connectivity is always there. That is the process of us forward-thinking. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Benevente?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to clarify that this motion has nothing to do with what Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Jensen said at all. We are all for more pedestrian walkways, we are for a more walkable city, but this city has also been privy to projects that do not come to fruition, and projects that are promised, and promised, and promised, that never actually get built, or get built so poorly that we've gotta pay more money to get them fixed correctly. So this isn't a question of whether or not we want a more walkable city, it's about, is the city of Fayetteville meeting its due diligence standards? So I just want to make sure it's clear that this motion, I think, is one that rejects any idea that we're against pedestrian-friendly city, but is in favor of having a city that responsibly conducts its projects, that we know exactly how much these things cost before we start writing blank checks. I know that when you own a lot of property in this area, sometimes, you know, you feel like you can benefit from projects getting done and being said to be done, but I think the majority of citizens actually want to make sure that we're doing things much more responsibly than we have been in the past six to 12 months.
Well, yeah, well, let me just review the cam on this particular item, I'll speak to that. As we do talk about the walkability, I think one of the things that has, has hurt us as a community is the fact that it takes us so long to do anything. This was actually approved in FY19, it was designed, NC DOT is involved, so it's gonna be built and constructed to their standards. And the biggest hindrance or, or threat to budget and on time and on budget are delays. And so, construction costs in 2019 have certainly changed in 2024, and they'll change in 2025. So I do understand due diligence, but they're telling you how much the project costs, and they're telling you where it's going and the purpose of it, and we just had a gentleman here today that gave us a very heartfelt example of what happens when you don't have pedestrians and cars meeting in a, in a bad situation, and this has ADA walking surfaces that he just, he just talked about. So I, I don't think, I think we've, we've gotta stay focused on the mission, which is to make the city more walkable, but, you know, everybody has their opinion to vote, but I think some of the sideline comments about motives, at the end of the day, I think everybody's motive is the same, which is to make sure that we can traverse around this city in a safe manner, so. But there is, Councilmember Benevente?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree that everyone has positive motives ultimately, so then I think maybe you should admonish anyone saying that we were against walkability. So don't let the admonishment only come when it's against one of your preferred council members, but also, also when there is an opportunity for, it's important, it's important, because if you can't have one council member saying that we don't believe in walkability, and then for that to get called out, you have nothing to say. So I think, again, we've got projects that we all think are great ideas, but are we doing our due diligence? Because what really puts projects behind is when you put the carpet for the horse, which I think is something that this council is willing to do on the backs of our taxpayers.
Okay, all right. So Councilmember Green, is your item to pull, is that a motion?
Just a quick comment.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
My, my motion had everything to do with just wanting to know the cost of the project in a very thick packet of information, there was no breakdown in cost. So, as I've told y'all before, I am the fiscally conservative, and I just need to see that. So that was what my motion was about.
Gotcha. All right, and so, can you repeat the motion?
The motion was to have staff bring back information on the cost of maintenance.
So is the table until?
Yeah, was that my motion? Yes, I'm sorry, y'all, it's been a long delay.
So just to make sure I'm clear, the clerk is clear, so this is a motion to table until staff brings back?
Correct. Just on, and, and if it's part of the, and I'm just saying, if it's part of the sidewalk package, and it can be worked into that sidewalk package, I'm all about that, I just need to know that. I, I don't, I just want to know where the funds are coming from, and, and how we're paying for the maintenance, because we're not talking about years worth of maintenance, we're talking about a lifetime of maintenance.
Gotcha. All right, so that was seconded.
So that was seconded by Councilmember Benevente. All right. All right. So this is motion on the floor to, to table with the conditions as mentioned. All right, council, look to you for your votes. Who are we missing, Jen? That's it? Okay. All right. So motion fails. Those voting opposed to table and Councilmember McNair, Banks McLaughlin here, there, Councilmember Thompson, Colvin and Jensen, those voted and here. Okay. All right. So council, entertain another motion if, since that one didn't carry. Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve the resolution, the ring, the municipal agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for ownership of the CSX Bridge.
All right. This is motion by Mayor Proton. Is there a second? Is that Councilmember here? All right. All right. And Thompson, I see Thompson. Okay. So we'll go with Thompson on that one. All right. Discussion on that? All right, council, look to you for your vote. I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't see you, see him down there. All right. Who are we missing? Councilmember Davis. All right. All right. Motion carries, seven, three. Those voting opposed. Councilmember Honduras, Green and who? Benevente? All right. All right. All right. Motion carries. All right. Eight point oh five. Councilmember Green, this is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was the bid from, to accept the bid, received on Mabel Smith. The lowest responsive, responsible bidder was Alpha Builders at $595,000. Again, we didn't get to this upstairs. I, I had a little bit of a red flag. Well, maybe we did, we did discuss this upstairs. I'm sorry. My apologies. Had a little bit of a red flag just because when you look at these conforming bidders on our bid sheet and the information we were given, they are, there's a lot of discrepancies in the top bidder versus the bottom bidder. And if you use the law of averages and you drop the highest and the lowest and you look at the averages, I'm going to project right now that this project's going to come in over budget if we do the 595,000 and end up somewhere between 690 and 750. But neither here nor there. It is a little bit of a red flag for me. And I had, I did have some concerns about that item. And for that reason, I asked that it be pulled for a separate vote. And let me, and this is also, was, this was also 595,000. And if I was not sure, this was also inclusive of the 100,000 or it did not include. It was in addition to, the 100,000 was extra.
I think 100,000 was for.
So it was 595,000 was the bid. And then the additional 100,000 would also be applied to this project.
That was for furnitures, fixtures and equipment budget. This is for just the, the construction or completion of construction. Is that right? Okay. All right. So Councilmember Green, you finished? I'm sorry. So it's a motion to table? Is that what you're saying?
I, I would like to make a motion to table, just simply to have more information on the bid itself and the discrepancies in the bids.
Okay. All right. This is motion by Councilmember Green, table. Is there a second, Councilmember Benevente? All right. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for action on this. This motion is to table. So vote. All right. So motion to table fails. Those voting to ta, and opposed to the motion, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, McNair, Davis, Colvin, Thompson, Jensen and here. All right. Those voting for, Honduras.
Councilmember Davis.
All right. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we accept the lowest responsible and responsible bidder and authorize the additional funds for the contingency and fee.
I think the motion is for Alpha Builders, isn't it? I think you need to say it specifically.
It is for Alpha.
That's what they have in the cam.
That's the request.
Alpha Builders and consultants.
All right. This is motion by Councilmember Davis, second by Councilmember Hare. Discussion? All right, council, look to you for your votes on that. Who are we missing? Okay. All right. Motion carries, eight, two. Those voting opposed, Councilmember Green and Honduras. All right. It's eight point oh, eight, six. Is that yours too, ma'am?
It is.
Goodness gracious.
This was, this, we're, we're only laughing because I'm the, usually the quiet one up here and tonight's not so much.
You took DJ's place.
I know, right? Ms. McN, Councilmember McNair over here, she's not helping. This was over accepting the, awarding the Mazarick Park Tennis Center Building to M&amp;E Construction for $2,573,629. I did ask a lot of questions upstairs. I would like to repeat some of my questions so that everyone understands where, what I kind of saw as an issue. This tennis center, if you'll recall, was, the work was done out in three, kind of three phases, as I'll call them. It was the site work, the tennis courts, pickleball courts, the courts work, and then the Mazarick Park Tennis Center Building. So what we're discussing now is the building itself, not the site work, not the courts. To me, the fact that we're discussing putting a building on a site that's not complete is putting the cart before the horse. So I asked questions about if the soil and the site had been certified. I'm not sure that I got 100% of the answer that I understood. Assistant City Manager, I guess, is going to address that. But I did, I did ask those questions. I know that $2.5 million was brought in to do prep work on this site in the very beginning. This is the second time this has gone out for bid. The first time the bids, we didn't get any bids, basically. I have worked with M&amp;E Contracting before, excellent company to work with. It's not about that. It's about getting the cart before the horse. So those were my concerns.
Yes, ma'am. And a very, very appropriate question. As you accurately stated, there's site work and tennis court work that's not included in your packet tonight that still need to be finalized. A lot of work's been done. However, the, the location on the site where the building is going, that has been independently certified and surveyed. I've had two different contractors come on site and, and do that work for us so that when the M&amp;E builder, presuming that they are awarded, they'll come in and do the final grading. So there's preliminary or rough grading that goes in and then the final grading will be done by M&amp;E when they come in and put the building on site.
Did, do we have any indication? I also expressed upstairs, I was a little concerned that they would come in and start into the building work and then come back to us and say, the site isn't quite ready yet or we're having this issue with the site. Is there something we can do to preclude that from happening? Or what is, do you have some opinion about the likelihood of that happening?
Let me, let me ask one question personally. I just want to confirm what I believe, but there was a pre-bid meeting already, so this, this general contractor has actually been on site already and has seen that.
Okay. So he had no concerns about, okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Let's see. Councilmember Honduras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To piggyback on my colleague's question, so is the site pad ready or not? And who, if it's not ready, is, is M&amp;E going to prepare the pad?
Right. So the, the site pad itself for the building is, is a part of the site. And that, that particular site has been certified independently by third parties as ready for this construction project to begin.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Apologize. Councilmember Benevente here and.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I appreciate Councilwoman Lynn doing, I think, a lot of due diligence that is necessary nowadays when it comes to projects. I consider this to be, you know, information that's in her lane. And so I'm hoping that we're all kind of taking this opportunity to let the public know when there have been concerns with this very project and others similar to it, that we are double checking our work, triple checking our work. And it might seem obvious to many that are used to just kind of covering up any, any potential issues, that we don't want the community to look behind the curtain as it relates to any issues. That's maybe the preference of people who've been on council for a long time. But I think the good thing that Councilmember Green brings to this particular city council is zero allegiance to having everything just go by without question. So I think these are valid, very relevant questions. I think with the kinds of project failures that we've had recently, that we be this extremely diligent. And if that means another meeting, these are projects that aren't going to go anywhere. We can have more information brought back to us in two weeks and we can all feel a lot more comfortable about proceeding. Otherwise, it's business as usual and we'll make the same mistakes as usual.
Lot done back there. Councilmember Hare, let me let you do it.
Thank you, Mayor. Adam, there he is. And if you would, Adam, just reiterate once again, because I know it's been some time out there on this project, been sitting a little and I'm, I'm very, very much aware of M&amp;E contracting, contractors. So they have already come out and did pre-preliminary oversight of the work and all before they even put their bid together.
Right. That we, when we put out a bid packet, there's a pre-bid meeting and all GCs, we had, I think we had nine GCs show up to, to the site.
Okay. And, and as far as, is there any additional certification that can help or that helps to cover the concern that's coming from my colleague to my left within what's to take place as far as the construction goal and the completion of the construction?
Well, I, I don't know that there's an additional certification other than what we have right now, which is a, a third party, actually two different third parties that have, have verified the grading and the survey work that was completed already from the previous GC on, on the, on the total site work. And it comes to the compaction and the grading has been, and said it is ready for this project.
And, and those, those persons or those contractors are certified and approved contractors to be able to give us that thumbs up to move forward.
They have the license to state that. That is correct.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Before I go to back, look like I've got multiple rounds, I need to clarify a couple of things that the city has successfully done hundreds of million dollars in capital projects. Okay? You do have bad actors in any space and this, the, the inference about these projects that are being continued by other contractors because of a bad actor that, you know, was sued earlier this week, that was awarded contracts in 2022 and 2023. So the council members that you say typically look the other way, you were included in that number in '23 and '22. But nevertheless, this is how you move it forward. And so council, as we go through and debate it, I think this is all good debate. So nobody's being critical in the questions. And I do appreciate Councilmember Green concerning with some of that. So I, I don't think that it has to be a personal attack on anybody for questioning it, but this is how you move it forward. But bad actors exist in any organization or, or, or opportunity when people do that. So, but I'll go to Councilmember Honduras, Davis and then back to Green and Benevente for second rounds. And then council, let's see if we can get to a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm looking at the cam, the information provided. So originally, this was a $6 million project, which was going to be funded through $6 million of ARPA funds. Then we added, we being the city, an additional $5.5 million to the Magic Park Tennis Center project for a total of $11.5 million, correct? So how much of that money has been expended thus far on the site work that's been done? Or would, all the work that's been done up until this point, how many, how many have, how much have we paid out?
We're going to track that number down for you.
And it doesn't have to be to the penny, but to the 100,000 would be good. And then while she's, while we're looking that information up, so the money tonight is to award roughly $2.5 million for the completion of the building?
For the construction of the building.
Construction of the building.
Yes, this will be the first time it's, I think our number's somewhere in the $9 million.
Nine million.
And I think we have an additional 1.6 or 7 left on, on the total project. So I can do the math in my head real.
Yes, that'd be nine minus 1.6. So you're looking at 7.4 million that we've paid out ballpark. So.
Oh, wait a minute. What's that number now? So it was 2.5 or plus 1 point?
Which says we have another 1.6 unspent.
So that's 4.1 minus the 11.
Yeah.
Okay. So you're right.
Pretty good, sir. Pretty good. Pretty quick. So the, what, once this, if we were to approve this contract tonight and award a little over $2.5 million to the M&amp;E Contracting Incorporated, who was the lowest responsible, responsible bidder, once they've completed the structure, is the 1.6 that we have left in the bank on this project enough to complete the site work that was unfinished by the previous contractor?
That remains to be seen. As I shared with you, that is, the bids that we have received in for the site work and the tennis courts exceed the budget that you, as we shared upstairs. We are looking to identify if there is an opportunity for us to use an informal bidding process with this, with a selected vendor or others to try to get the remaining courts, to get the courts and the site work done within the budget as close to possible as we can. But given the bids that we have, it is safe to say that if we're talking about 1.5 million dollars, is that about right for the site work and tennis courts? That, based on the bids we have, will not be enough.
Thank you, Mr. Manager and Assistant Manager, Lindsay. So for me, not knowing that, I know we're all anxious about getting these projects that have stalled, these CFP projects, on track and completed as soon as possible because they've already been delayed, delayed several months. But making haste, another hasty decision is, I just wouldn't be able to support that tonight without additional information.
Thank you, Councilmember Honduras. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if, Councilwoman Green, if you were going to make a motion? And if not, I was prepared to make one.
I saw the discussion.
Okay. I didn't know if you were going to make one or not.
All right. So I'll circle back. Councilmember Benevente, second round, and then I'll go back to the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just going to wait for the train to go by. Just going to wait for the train to go by. Here's the bottom line, there's four items on the consent agenda that are of high interest to the community. And if it hadn't been for Councilmember Green asking to pull them off and to have his discussions, none of these issues were going to get discussed tonight. We were going to push through the tennis center, Maple C. Smith, and two other projects that have had issues because of us being defrauded. So it is highly necessary that we take extra diligence than what is typical when it comes to these projects we've already been burnt on. So I think any, you know, idea that, you know, we're somehow stalling these projects because we don't want progress is incorrect to say. We all want these projects to get completed. But if the community has said the issue is not about getting done and done tomorrow, it's about getting it done correctly. It's about being done right, so we don't exceed the budget to the point that we have to get another contractor here to do even more expensive work. So let's leave room for these things to get full accounting and full information, so that the community doesn't feel like, once again, we're trying to brush past these things, keep the curtain up so that they can't see exactly what's going on? Because that's what happens when you push things through the consent agenda without due process and due diligence. That's what's being asked for tonight. We keep saying no and just saying, hey, just push it through, hope for the best. That should be a concern to the community that's already seen us drop the ball several times on these projects already.
All right, so before I go back to the motions, every one of these items were pulled and discussed and discussed and discussed. So I don't, you know, the inference that something's trying to be pushed through is ridiculous. Every council member on every meeting has the ability to pull, just like Councilmember Green did, to have an open discussion, which we've done for all four items, so. But I'll go to Councilmember Green, this was your item, you have something?
I have one last thing, and then I'll make a motion.
All right.
It's going to be, it's a quick one, I think. Can staff, what is the, what is this building going to be used for? I'm sorry to ask an obvious question in my mind, but I just think we need to state that.
Thank you, council. And Councilmember Green, what you're looking at on the, on the picture, I don't know if you can see it or not, but it's a, a building that's a tennis center, which will have a conference room in it, it'll have bathroom showers, it'll have a office area, it'll be a place that'll be rentable for our citizens. I hope that answered the question.
How long is the projected construction, length of time for construction of this building?
Well, I mean, it's 6,500 square feet.
Okay.
This, this kind of building probably will take about, I would say maybe nine to maybe 18 months, somewhere in that range, depending on the weather.
Okay, and what, what is the projected timeframe to finish the tennis courts?
Easily 10 months. But let me, let me, let me, let me say something.
Absolutely.
I think what's being missed, Councilmember Hondros, is there has been substantial work done at the Mazarik Tennis Center. One of the questions that was set upstairs is for council to consider informal approach to finishing. And that's the word I want to make sure that we use, is finishing. The work that's been done for the tennis courts and the site work. If you take that approach to finishing what has been done, then I think the budget that we have intact, if you go ahead and approve the building, there's 1.6 million dollars left to finish the site work and the tennis courts. And if we use an informal approach, then we can go ahead and make that happen and be done with it. And we can open this thing up next spring, next summer, and we'll have a beautiful facility. So if, if we can use the verbiage to finish what has been done, the building is separate, it came in at the budget that we thought it was going to be done. We have a local contract that we've all worked with, they built swimming pools for us, and they do a wonderful job. I'm very comfortable in this process that we're taking now to get this project done. So, oh, that's all I got to say.
All right, this is Councilmember Green, back to you. Oh, Councilmember here, yes, sir.
Yeah, Mayor, it's, and I was really, and thank you, Mr. Director. And I was trying not to say rebut what was stated about pushing things up the, up the flagpole, down the flagpole or whatever, as if something is trying to be pushed to the side. As far as this item goes right here, and my colleague, she just happened to pull it tonight, but if you go back and look in, in your emails, this very item, I pull, was told everyone that I was pulling this item tonight while those of you were in, I think it was Kalapas? Yeah, in Tampa during, during the National League. So I, I think it's unfair and unjustified to say that anyone or all, however you want to put us in one container, no. We do want the projects completed, but at the same time, there's concern among all of us that sit around this diocese, and you saw my concern while you were at the National League of Cities. It's just that my colleague to my left pulled it tonight before I had my opportunity. I just wanted to put that in there, sir.
Okay.
It wasn't all that much appreciated, and I turn it back to my colleague to my left.
I see Councilmember Hondros says it's like, you had, it's third round, sir.
I was going to save this for discussion on the motion, but I can say it now, doesn't matter. I'd be remiss if I didn't say so. I haven't, on the institutional side or the public side, done projects to this extent, but doing smaller scale projects on the private side, you always finish the site work before you do the building. So this is a little opposite of that, and that's a reservation or a hangup that I don't have. I don't recall any project I've ever been a part of where the site work wasn't completed, and we started construction and completed the construction of the building of the structure before the site work.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that it's all the way true, but, you know, we'll leave it at that. Yes, sir, third round, Mr. Benevente.
Director Gibson, I appreciate your confidence and your experience in all this. I think the question is more about making sure that a majority of council members feel comfortable with all this. And I feel comfortable about this when my community feels comfortable about all this. And I don't think we can do that until we've really had a discussion about it. And as far as, you know, pulling it off the agenda, that's one thing, but I'm not sure if Councilmember here, you've asked any questions upstairs or down here that have actually answered anything differently? I mean, it's one thing to pull it, just to pull it to show everyone your support for it, but has there been any actual information that you've gathered or gained that has moved you from left to right on this? We all want to make sure that the tennis center gets completed. We all want the tennis, well, I want to play some pickleball, I really do, I haven't played yet. But the question is not whether we want to complete it or finish it, it's whether we've checked our boxes with, not just ourselves, but the community, on these issues that have been in the newspaper, that have been massive topics of conversation. There's, is there anything about us getting a full breakdown at the next meeting going to stop your estimate of next spring, next summer, this getting built?
You have a, you have a local contractor who's been sitting for a period of time, and the more you wait, his numbers may change.
So.
I would, I would like.
Will, not may.
May, you don't know.
Will.
You're speculating.
It's construction, man.
Sure, but a week or now, is you speculating whether or not it'll change?
No, he said, he said delay means.
But one of the things that I want to make sure you understand is, when the project was going, we always anticipated that the building pad would be separate, but be in the project, so that the contractor that was doing the site work would have the building pad ready to do. And it would have been done when the first bid went out. That didn't happen, so the building pad is still ready to go. What's, what's, what's a little frustrating is that the site work, and I know people think that when you say site work, that there's some major thing that needs to happen. If you go out to the site now, you'll see that the lighting poles are in the air. So when we're talking about site work, we're talking about finishing the concrete pads that are, that surround the tennis courts where you put the asphalt in. The site work consists of building the sidewalks that, that head toward each one of the tennis pads and the landscaping. There is no where bulldozers go in and dig up more stuff, that's not going to happen. All we're talking about when we're talking site work is building concrete walkways and putting grass and trees up. That is the completion of the site work.
So I can, we just asked my question again, because that was good information, but it didn't answer my question. We don't know whether if we wait two weeks from today to have the same vote with more present, information presented, that it'll cost any much more, especially if we know that costs are going to go up regardless from what we estimate them to be. And I guess I'm just, I'm not willing to pretend like that dollar figure difference is going to make or break this project. I really feel like two weeks from now, if we have the information that makes the majority of council comfortable, that we could still get this project finished in the same timeframe that you wanted. That's all I'm asking.
I couldn't give you a definitive.
Okay, so this two weeks could make or break this project?
No, I'm not saying that.
Okay, so then you're saying that it should be fine, then?
I'm not, I'm not making that judgment either.
Either way.
It's, it's, it was presented to council, and I can't tell council what to do.
Certainly. Well, again, I, so I think that's, that's the difference here, is we all want this project done. Do we feel like we, if someone came up to us off the street and asked us, Mario, what exactly are you doing differently with this project than you did the last time you gave it to somebody who left it halfway finished? I'm not sure a majority of people on this diocese could answer that citizen, all the questions that they would have. So, I mean, it's just, it's something that everyone, I'm not really sure who we're trying to serve here, if not the people's inquiries on this very hot topic, but I'll leave it at that. I think people have already made up their mind.
All right, so Councilmember Green, again, I'll go to you, if you, are you making a motion to, all right, can you repeat it for me?
Yeah, I haven't stated it yet.
Okay. It's been so much discussion.
I know, I know. Mr. Gibson.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate the position you're in more than you know. I have been in your exact position many, many times, and it's never fun. I would really like to see this, just, I need more information. And maybe I should have come prior, for those of you who personally know, I've had a lot going on in my life over the last three months. So it's been very difficult to stay on task with the city council, and I'm, thankfully, I'm back amongst the living. But anyway, my motion is going to be to deny approval of the project for tonight, but what I would really like is prior to the next meeting, if we could have more information like you just gave us, that would have been ever so helpful, because not all of us have been here since day one. I came on council in December, this was already, you know, for lack of a better term, it was a done deal. I sit on the Parks and Rec Board, but we haven't gotten into this level of discussion on that board. So I do feel like I am missing information. So for me, it's just about getting that missing information, and I would be more than happy to move it forward. So I don't know how my fellow council members feel about just from, just the next meeting? And, well, our next meeting is next week, isn't it? Because this week's delayed meeting, no? When is our next meeting? Monday, so we're only talking about a week, so that might be too quick to turn it around. We have one meeting in December. Whichever one staff, I mean, I'll, I'll make the motion however it would suit staff if it makes a difference, and I hope it does, because I hope you just see that, I would just like the information like you just shared. That would have changed my whole questioning on everything, so.
All right, this is motion by Councilmember Green to deny, second by Councilmember Benevente. We've had discussion, council, I'll look to you for action.
Can we state a?
And this is to deny, so if you're voting yes, that means that you're voting to deny. Then, it is, to deny approval.
Deny is a yes.
Yes, you vote green, that means you're voting to deny.
Clear the board, Jennifer.
Yeah, clear that. All right, everybody clear on that, green is to deny. What is it, sir?
We're not voting to deny or approve anything, we've, I thought the motion was to come back in a week?
Yeah, it was to deny the approval tonight and come back in to whatever the next available. Let's say December's first meeting in December.
Would you accept a friendly amendment to remove the word deny, just say you're, we're tabling it for a week to give more information?
Yes, if that helps, yes.
All right, who was the second on that?
Mario.
Of course, all right. So it's a motion to table, second by Councilmember Benevente. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes, and this is to table. Jennifer, can you put us, thank you. All right, motion to table has failed, I go to Councilmember here.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you. As I move forward to make this motion, just wanted to state that when you hear a number of conversations and questions go on from colleagues, it's not always necessary to repeat the same question four or five times, so maybe you may not hear me say anything upstairs. May I move, I like to move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with the apparent lawyers responsive bidder, M and E.
All right, all right, that is a motion by Councilmember here to approve the award, second by Councilmember Davis. Discussion, I think we've had plenty, and council, I'll look to you for action on that. All right, Madam Clerk, motion carries seven, three, those voting opposition, Councilmember Green, Hondros, and Benevente. All right, motion carries.
Mayor, sir, before we move forward, that information that my colleague to my left, Councilmember Green, that was requested, can't that information still be sent out?
Yes, sir, it can. We were going to circle back with council first thing tomorrow, Adam, and we'll ask you if you have any questions about that. And there was also a question about the maintenance on the Skybow Road project from Swain to wherever, how far it went up, we'd be, we'll try to get that as well.
Very good, thank you, sir, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, council, moving to the next item, which is 9.01, to receive the Community Police Advisory Board. I see Dr. Perkins there, sir, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, Mayor Broten. First of all, I'd like to begin by thanking members of city council for supporting CPAT. Many of you have came out to support us and give us feedback, and we certainly do appreciate that. And I'm just talking while I get my slides together. All right. Thank you for the invitation to come and just give you this brief update on what we're doing with CPAT. That's not mine, is it? That's somebody else's. Come on, help me out.
There's two of them up. There you are.
All right, here we go. So we've been working very aggressively over the past six or seven months, we've got four new board members, and every time we get a new board member, it's, it's like a, going through a new training process, because there's so much information that has to be divulged to them. First of all, you have to understand policing, you have to understand the makeup of the city police department, and got to also understand the charter to which you, members of council, gave us the charter to do. And so part of my responsibility as a chair is to make sure that everyone understands what that charter is. There's nine items in that charter. But based on our work, and I thank Assistant City Manager Yates for working with us on a strategic plan, we came up with this broad board vision, which is to improve the quality of policing through a cooperative effort with the community. This is the mission statement, again, taken from the charter that you gave us and based on our strategic plan. I'm not going to belabor you by reading through all of that, if you don't mind. These are the nine goals in the charter that council gave to us, and this is the basis for our strategic plan that we were able to. And this is the basis for our strategic plan that we were able to come. So, these are our three priorities we went forward based on the strategic plan that we developed this year. Create a safe space for community dialogue around policing, community safety, create a safe space for transparency and information concerning policing and community safety issues, and create a space to build connection between policing practices and community. The CPAT was a part of a project along with one of our other agencies. And some of the recommendations that came from that Center for Democracy and Innovation, when it looked at us, and what was the name of the other organization? Next Generation, Jeff? Is that the name of it?
Fayetteville Next.
Fayetteville Next. We would compare it with Fayetteville Next. And what their survey showed was, for the CPAT, it showed a strong correlation with our relationship with council and to advise you and to give you information. And on their side of the house, it showed a strong connection with community, but less capacity to communicate with you. And they, and for that, they consider that to be a strength. And what they would like for us to do is kind of come to the middle on that. And so, based on our strategic plan, we believe that these three objectives will get us there somewhere in the middle. And so, we want to provide greater venues for residents upon, based on input, related to public safety. These were our past goals. Now, we recognize that some of the things that we tried, it didn't pan out. You know, we had listening sessions where, you know, nobody showed up but us and a few council members and we thank you for your support. But the whole objective, and this is my third year with this in our board, is, you know, in the first year, we were behind those four walls. That's all we did. And so, this report reflects that we moved beyond those four walls, got out into the community, were able to talk to the community. Now, also, let me give you my disclaimer. I'm also a member of the volunteer police chaplaincy program for Fayetteville Police Department. So, I'm already out there. I'm walking the streets with the chief, you know, with the captains, with patrol officers. So, I know what they're going through every day. Other members of CPAT have also joined on board with that. So, these were some of our goals. These are some of our activities that we participated in. One of the things I think that some of our members are working on right now, and one of the things I had to share with them is that it doesn't take all members of the board for an activity. If you decide you want to go to a church meeting, for example, bring that information back, share with the rest of the board what happened at that particular meeting. And I think we're getting there. We just, it takes a little bit of work. Takes a little bit of work. All right. Subject to your questions. That's my brief overview of the CPAT.
Thank you, Dr. Perkins. Councilmember Benevente.
Before I ask any questions, I kind of just want to leave it open if there were any other questions from other city council members. I'm sure maybe an effort will be made to kind of like clean up any questions that I ask, but I just want to make sure that if there was a first round for people, or maybe it'll just be rebuttal against what I ask.
Are you deferring your time?
I just want to make sure.
You have the floor.
Okay, it's just me then. All right. Dr. Perkins, you, can you pull up the slide again that has the mission statement? I really want to understand, you've said you've been in this board for three years, two as the chairman, is my understanding correct?
Correct.
Can you name any police policies that you guys have reviewed in that time?
Yes, we, searches and seizures, and we asked about policies on how interactions, I guess you would call that internal affairs, how investigated particular actions when officers were involved in those actions. So, those are very two recent, specific actions that we asked.
When you say recent, how recent?
Within the last three meetings. We meet every month.
So, outside of the last three months, there haven't been any other policies that you reviewed in the other two and a half years?
That, okay, so over the entire two and a half years, I can't tell you how many we've reviewed, but we, I have one of our members, Pablo, his responsibility is to tell us which policies that we're going to review. So, every year, we've reviewed policies.
I think that's the kind of stuff that we would need to have reported back to us. Because if you're saying that over the course of that 12 months, there were so many policies that you guys reviewed, that means you guys put in a lot of hours of work. So, where is that on the slideshow, right? If you're saying that it was searches and seizures and police internal affairs, officer actions, related to officer actions, then I want to see that. You know, I want to see what you guys have done. Because the follow-up question is, what recommendations did you make based on your reviews? At least on those two that you mentioned?
I don't remember off the top of my head any recommendation that remained.
So, with that being your mission to review and recommend, that's the first sentence that you said.
Right.
And so, for three years, you can't tell us a single policy you reviewed or recommended.
Not off the top of my head, no, I can't.
So, that's what I think the work should have been done. Did you guys, Mr. Yates, did you guys say you guys had a work session or some kind of...
We've spent the last six months on strategic planning.
Strategic plan, right. And so, during that time, no discussion was had about work that they've done to be presented?
Are you referring to the strategic planning process or are you referring to the presentation for tonight?
My assumption was that the strategic planning process produced this presentation. Is that incorrect?
The strategic planning process produced the board's objectives for the upcoming year, the three main objectives.
Which were in this presentation.
They are in this presentation, correct.
So, I guess my question again is that in that plan, no effort was made to discuss how they've actuated anything at this point in three years?
The discussion during the strategic planning process, and I won't speak for the board chair, but there was a lot of discussion around moving forward with a regular rhythm or cadence of those policy, of that policy review and those, there has been review of policies over the last several years, at least since I've been attending those meetings and I don't remember which ones off the top of my head.
Right. And I've attended, I think, up until about three, four months ago, all of the meetings, you know, and so, I can say that perhaps the searches and seizures have been a topic. That's what I want to see, is what you guys have done with that, if anything. Especially because that's the whole point, is to make better best practice recommendations based on something. You said that you guys have done some listening sessions and were hearing out some community concerns. Can you speak to any community concerns that you guys in the last six months, last year, feel like have risen to the top?
So, that's a great question. This report is over a year old. So, this is like last year.
I was going to say, it looked kind of familiar.
Yeah, yeah. This is like last year's report because this year, you know, we have the new members and we've been in the strategic planning process. Yes, so, one of the listening sessions where we did have someone present, what they wanted to know is what was the police department's practice when they received like prank calls, right? And so, we had to defer that to the chief because, you know, we didn't know. And so, then we forwarded that information to the chief, for his staff to get back with that resident on what that particular issue was. Another issue was by a mental health provider, is how does the Fayetteville Police Department respond to individuals with a mental health crisis or in a mental health crisis? And do they have mental health professionals, you know, who come out on those particular calls with them? And that was answered also by someone from the police department.
Can you recall perhaps some issues that you've read about in the newspaper that, you know, maybe they didn't come to your meeting and voiced your concerns? But, you know, you're a man of this city and you certainly can see times when people have brought up issues in this community. Do your membership also bring issues up front? Because they're members of the community too. I mean, if we're talking about community concerns, that includes the individual members being able to bring up their own, they're members of the community.
Absolutely.
Do you get any more variety from them?
So, the last two issues that was brought to fruition and discussed at the meeting was, one, is the Fayetteville Police Department prepared for a mass shooting at a school?
Okay.
So, and that was something that was going on in the community and that was brought to the table and was addressed.
Nationally.
Yeah. The other issue that was brought was, is the Fayetteville Police Department adequately equipped to handle taking over as school resource officers, whatever that term is? And so, that was brought to the table. And so, those were the most two recent issues that were brought to the table.
Well, and I think, you know, those are things that we love to have heard about too. I guess the one that I'm referencing in particular, and I'll tie this into another question, you said you've had a lot of new members lately. Why is that?
I can't tell you why they don't come back, sir. Because, you know, the policy is if you miss three meetings, then you're gone.
Have you had some resignations lately?
Had one, yes.
Do you happen to know why they resigned?
Some information was shared with me and now I know.
Did you want to speak at all to some of those concerns and maybe the feeling that some issues in the community that are not in line with perhaps the chair?
Councilmember Benevente, bring it on home. Okay. Because we've got a couple of...
It takes longer for me to get interrupted by answering my questions, so let me ask it.
Well, you've asked six.
Well, and I asked, that's why I asked initially, who else had?
It doesn't negate the fact you pressed your button first.
That's right. Well, that's why I left it open for anyone else who might have had questions because y'all knew that I was going to have questions because I didn't anticipate y'all to really have questions.
We do, but what we're saying is, it can't be endless. So, I'm just saying.
It's not endless.
Kind of bring it on.
These are the last two. So, Dr. Perkins, you as the chairperson, you know, have your views about issues and perhaps where you stand on them. Can you understand or believe that some of your membership has felt that that has limited their ability to bring issues to the table?
Well, I don't know how other members feel about that. But I will tell you that on our agenda, we have what's called roundtable. And that's where every member gets to express whatever it is they want to express. Also, members have the opportunity to have agenda items. Send them to me two weeks in advance to give me an opportunity to coordinate with appropriate people to get those answers, particularly if it's a city issue, if it's a police department issue, you know, then have those people, those experts there. So, those opportunities exist.
Well, and you've been able to review, I think, the letter of concern. You know, that's something I think during, after I make a motion to accept this report, you know, I'm going to take an opportunity at that point to, I think, make people aware of some of these concerns. Did you, again, just as an opportunity, while you still have the microphone, want to address any of those concerns that were brought up, other than what you just said, which was that you've given people chances to make an agenda?
No, I would not like to just do that.
Very good. Thanks, sir.
All right. Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Perkins, for a great presentation. I just want to address a couple of things. One is when I went to your last meeting, I was very impressed by the way you conducted the meeting. I was glad to see that the roundtable does work for all those that have concerns or issues or thoughts about how things can be done or how things can be done better. Sometimes when you don't reach out, or when a community doesn't reach out to you, that you have council members who could attend the meeting and speak for their communities when they hear from their constituents. And that's what I did. But what I wanted to ask specifically, tell us about the process and correct me if I'm wrong, about how you assigned your strategic plan to the individuals on your board. I think you gave two per strategic plan.
Right.
And what would be their duties?
And so, once we decided on what those objectives would be, of course, you always ask for volunteers because I believe that you should go with strong suits, you know, so whatever people feel most comfortable with. And so, those members actually volunteered. And so, when the member volunteered, I asked for someone to volunteer to be their support person. And then, of course, I'd be executive of all of those committees.
And I want to follow up. I don't know the young lady's name, but the Hispanic young lady that was so excited about her assignment.
Number 13.
Could you do me a favor? The next time you have a presentation, can you bring those individuals in so they can give their own part of the area, of the street, of the strategic plan that you assigned them to?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson.
So, Dr. Perkins, again, thank you for it. You know, these volunteer boards and commissions are unpaid. People dedicate their time and their efforts and their skills because they love this community, love this city. So, I appreciate that. And so, with any board or commission, I can refer to the members of the board and commissions, chair and former chair to my right and left, how many times that we have to fill vacancies because people miss meetings. Life gets in the middle of it. So, you know, there are commitments that you make and the policy is if you miss so many, then you're replaced. And so, that is nothing unique to this board. So, but thank you for your commitment and consistency over the last two to three years. As I look at the board goals, there are nine or so goals that you have that are broad goals. You know, the mission statement for the City of Fayetteville is provide better service for its citizens and be physically responsible broadly speaking. So, we can't tie this board to, to say your goals were not met because of a broad mission statement, at least in my opinion, that you are speaking to the police about policies, you are emphasizing and advocating between a better relationship between the police and asking about the wellness of officers and some of these other goals are more attainable. And the fact that you did a strategic plan is good because it comes into play when boards get out of focus. You know, oftentimes, things come up individually and it takes a board out of focus. And that's why we have our five strategic goals to remind us of what we all agree that would be the marching orders for this board for the next, you know, for the next 12 months. So, I am interested to hear maybe if there can be, maybe a more recent though, or often check-in in between, instead of once a year, maybe every other quarter, just to let us know how you're coming along with your strategic planning and how you, how the new direction or the things that you all have said are important will better serve or inform the council. And we do appreciate that. So, I am certainly thankful again, prepared to receive this report hopefully, and remind our colleagues that this is volunteer work, that no one is paid to do this. You do it because you like to do and you love your community. So, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, and if I could have just one alibi, one of the things that the board did do is we developed this survey. And we're going to, our ambitious goal this year is to collect 1,000 residents on this survey. And basically, it's a QR code, it's got five questions, and there's three different versions, so a total of 15 questions. It's a vetted survey because it's taken from a study done in the Seattle Police Department. And so, in our work, in the coming months, as we work on those goals based on our strategic plan, we're going to be using that survey judiciously to try to...
Now, has that survey QR code been shared on our platforms and the newsletter and the City of Fayetteville's website and Facebook pages?
We're working on it.
Okay.
Assistant City Manager Yates, his office collects the data. It comes into him.
So, I think it should be across all city platforms.
And I think the next city council meeting without any objection from council, I think you all should take the survey.
Yeah, no doubt about it.
Look forward to it. All right. I'll go back to Councilmember Benevente, Thompson, and Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I took the survey. It's been out for about a year, so it's definitely something that more people should participate in. Just to clarify something that Councilmember Thompson said, and I felt like I really need to know this, council members can come to the meetings and speak to the Citizens' Police Advisory Board?
He didn't speak to Police Advisory Board. It was after the meeting. He had conversations with some...
Oh, he just kind of hung out and got, okay. Just wanted to clarify because...
No, you can't speak at the meeting.
That's why I was making sure I clarified. So, your board goals, not your mission statement, but your board goals specifically say review and provide, regularly review and provide proposals for updates to policy. So, it's not what Mayor Colvin said previously that it's in your mission statements overly broad. This is one of your nine goals. So, let's just make sure that we're not conflating these two things. There's goals here that you've had for a long time that we didn't see anything on the presentation about, and that was the issue. And again, there's nothing wrong with us saying that about the Millennial Advisory Commission if we ask them to do things. There's nothing wrong with, you know, people coming in and saying that Parks and Rec needs to improve. We appreciate all of our volunteers, but I think you also appreciate relevant feedback.
Absolutely.
I don't think that you are now afraid to participate in this program anymore, are you?
I've never been.
That's what I want to make sure of.
Yeah.
Because I think that sometimes, you know, asking critical questions like this, the the feedback that I get is, don't scare them off. No one's going to want to volunteer anymore because you had a standard? No, we need standards on these boards, or else we'll never produce the kind of work that we need. My concern is that they don't want you to succeed sometimes, because God forbid you actually came back and told us some policies you thought needed to be improved. So if we kind of hope that you don't, because, you know, we kind of don't ask any questions, and then everyone gets complacent, well, that's perfect for people who never wanted your opinion in the first place. Because God forbid it's not Chairman Perkins in charge. God forbid it's somebody who has, you know, a different view on these things. Imagine if we had Sean McMillan as the chairperson. You'd hate to see that. So, I mean, this, this is just. Well, I, it's not really a question. I'll make a motion and just say right now that I move that we approve, or we agree to receive this, this document, and then I have discussion after that.
All right. So it's motion to approve. Councilmember Thompson, is that a question or a motion or? To approve?
For my mic, Mr. Mayor. I am, I am seconding, but I also have a statement that I would like to make.
All right.
And I'll, and I'll wait for discussion.
All right. So motion by Councilmember Benevente, second by Councilmember Thompson. Discussion, I do see Councilmember Hare, and then I'll go back to Benevente and Thompson, and hopefully we can receive this report.
Doctor, for one thing, thank you. Thank you for what you have brought us this evening as chair of the Appointments Committee, Committees. What, one thing that we try to do now, we're doing more of, is staff is supporting and helping our committees and boards as much as possible to build objectives, to make that committee interested in those that are volunteering their free time to want to work hard to get it done. One thing that I'm proud of with you and your Police Advisory Committee Board is that you all have come together and built your own goals and, and worked with staff and, and our police department to get those goals built. That is, these are the kind of things that we are trying to do with every committee and board that we have in the city, and I just wanted just to say thank you for that. I look forward to getting one of those cards, so that I might be able to answer my questions also, and.
And I also have a hat for you.
No, sir, you don't have no hat. See, you was doing all right until you had the wrong hat. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just state two things. One is that I think you're ahead of the game, because as the Appointment Chair, if you don't mind, he is also going to bring a lot of these committees to council, so they can give us their strategic plan and tell us what they're doing during the year. So thank you for being ahead of the game. But what I really want to say to my colleagues is, we have the power, or the authority, and I don't want to use the word authority. We have the means of reaching out to let know what these department heads, what our issues are with our constituents. I have expressed to a lot of my colleagues, a lot of these questions that we ask, we can always ask ahead of time. Most of them will be answered, as I do. I contact staff all the time about questions that I have, so I don't have to come to council and prolong something that I already knew the answer to. Let's just say that you're doing a great job. Let's just say that, keep doing what you're doing. I like the members that you currently have. I like that you're reaching out to the constituents by the QR code. I would hope that you would use that information soundly and bring back us the results. Thank you, Dr. Perkins.
Thank you.
Councilmember Benevente.
We got complaints from different boards in the past about membership, toxic environments, and I appreciated when the city took some level of action. We received this letter two months ago, and there has been no action. It starts, "Dear Councilmembers, my name is Jeremy Feibig. I'm a Fayetteville citizen from District One and a professor at Fayetteville State. I was appointed," not, it's not going to be the whole thing. "I was appointed to the Community Police Advisory Board last spring. I do not believe that CPAB is an effective advisory board for the police department, city council, or city managers. As you likely know, CPAB makes FPD sort of nervous. There's been a line in the sand drawn about it expressly not becoming a police review board. Additionally, there are a lot of requirements in this charge, but in the several months involved in CPAB, I have witnessed only advocacy work on the part of its members, especially the chair, and very little advisory work. This is despite at least a couple of members requesting specific action or proffering specific substantive ideas and ideas being undertaken by FPD or the city. I believe that under an open-minded leadership of Chief Braden and the strategic approach of Mr. Yates, CPAB can serve effectively as advisory group for council and FPD, but the membership must have space, composition, and leadership to deliver a diversity of opinion. I believe Chief Braden's perspective on the city and community relations are valid. At the same time, I believe our chairman, Dr. Perkins, and perhaps certain of the CPAB membership are overly starstruck and enamored with the chief, that all the group will do is voice agreement with him. I understand that impulse. However, FPD council and the city cannot be served by a group that only says yes or whose role is only to cheerlead." The full letter is something that every member of this council has. I think we should take seriously, as opposed to just allowing this board to continue in a direction that has been so unproductive for the past three years. I would go so far as to say, there was a time when the pro-police thing to do was to not have such a board. And there is a discussion I would like to have at some point about doing the pro-police thing and going ahead and closing down this board entirely. I don't think that there's appetite for that today, but that's a direction that I think that we should look towards to maintain the time of the chief being at these meetings, the time of his staff being at these meetings. And if we're so low on police availability, that perhaps we consider whether the time spent at a group meeting that has not been productive in three years be better spent addressing their actual duties out in the field. But that, that'll be a conversation for another day. It's just very important that we recognize whether we're expending resources in a way that is not going to give us the right results for our city.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Benevente. I'll just end it with this. There are people who intently look to create conflict between the police department and the community. Okay, for whatever reason. But I am glad that we have a process that serves as a bridge between the community and the police department, and the council is able to, to fairly assess both. So I haven't heard anything that had any type of conflicting information about any disagreements necessarily, but I did hear the reviewing of certain policies that impact their behavior, like the Internal Affairs policy was explained and those kind of things. So as you come back to talk to us, we look forward to that. But we've got to know that there are people who continue to create an animus between law enforcement and the communities, and the communities don't want that. They spoke loudly and resoundingly a couple of weeks ago in every community about that, including ours, that people had had enough of that. So thank you for the work that you're doing. Thank you for your, your board, and we would love to meet and put faces to some of the other citizens that volunteered their time and thank them as well. But Dr. Perkins, thank you. Thank you, too. I don't see Chief Braden in here, but thank you to his team as well for being available to you.
Assistant Manager Yates, he's a great asset to us as well.
Assistant Manager Yates, thank you. All right. So council, there was a motion by Councilmember Benevente, it was seconded by Thompson. We've had discussion. Look to you for action. To receive the report. All right. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you.
All right, counsel, last item moving to receive FY first quarter financial update, Mr. Yates.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. With the late hour, I'll, I'll move quickly, and I'll be happy to answer any additional questions. In your packet today, we uploaded a comprehensive report that showed all the funds and the expenditures by departments as well. So if you have any questions about that, I'll be happy to answer those in more detail at a later date. But just kind of starting with the bottom line up front, city's financial health is strong. We are in good shape, and I'll talk about fund balance in just a moment. You received your audit last week, I believe, two weeks ago, and we had a clean opinion. Our fund balance was slightly below our projected or our goal level, but I want to talk about that in a little more detail. At the end of the first quarter, your general fund is performing as expected. It's a little early in the year to kind of divine anything out for the end of the year. What ends up happening with accounting is your first three months, because you accrue those back on a full accrual basis, typically we're on cash basis, but as we go back, the, a lot of the revenues and expenditures you get in the first three months belong to the prior year. So really, at the end of your second quarter is the first really good activity you get from that fiscal year. But based on kind of what we see right now, we look like we're on the same trajectory as we've been in the past. And then our vacancies continue to be a positive and a risk. Positive from the perspective that they are saving us budgetary dollars, but a risk in that you hear all the time, for instance, the police department's vacancies, transit, that it, those vacancies eventually pile up and impact services. So this continues to be a risk for us. I believe Jerry Clip, our HRD Director, at the next meeting, will be providing some information on staffing levels. So let's talk real quick about fund balance. As I mentioned, I can spend more time on this at a future date if the council would like. Right now, you're, you're at about 9.27%. The biggest driver of that is as we closed the books this year, you had interfund loans that we had to make amongst several of the different capital programs. And I apologize, that ta, the interfund loans table did not come over correctly. So you had 11.5 million of interfund loans. Those get reversed on July 1st, as well as the $3.1 million of, of fund balance appropriation. That's going to come out of your current year revenue. So if we make those adjustments, you're looking at really about 15% to 16% of fund balance. You're well above your policy level. We can have some additional conversation. I believe last time, Mr. Bittner from PB Mayor's mentioned to you that we threw an indicator in the LGC's indicator pack. Well, we can talk about how that changed, how that relates to how we calculate fund balance versus the LGC, and what possibly there is to do about that. But I, I wanted to point out, and the reason why this slides in here, that we're really in good shape. On July 1st, when we started this year, and we reversed those interfund loans to make the cash work, your fund balance level shot back up to that 15% to 16% level. Your general fund cash flow, as we would expect every year, you are at a negative cash flow for most of the year. You get all your tax revenues in over about three or four months, and then the rest of the time, you draw down on that. So as you can see, the columns on the left of the screen are from 2024 and where we are in 2025. The big difference in the revenue side, about $10 million, is a timing issue around vehicle taxes from the, from the, we're working with the county to get over to us, plus a timing issue of the POW money payment. And between those two things, that's almost $8 million difference in that case. So we are working through that. We will see that level out in your next quarter. That should come back to a little bit more in line with history. General fund revenues, again, as I pointed out, ad valorem taxes that we, the way to read this chart is the first quarter of '24 against the first quarter of '25. If you are looking over at the far right, anything that's in red means we're trailing where we were in '24. Anything in green means we're ahead. So you can see we're trailing by about $10.6 million on total revenue, primarily in those areas of restricted intergovernmental revenue, which is the POW bill money I talked about, and the ad valorem tax dollars, which are the motor vehicle taxes that we are working to get in and get booked. Beyond that, we are right on target with where we've been historically. And as you can see, last year at this time, we'd spent about 8.8% of our budget, or I'm sorry, realized about 8.8% of our revenue. Today, we've realized about 5.7%. So general fund expenditures, same layout of the chart. We are right in line with where we'd expect to be on salary. We are ahead of the 1.2, and that's mostly due to overtime. We're seeing a lot of overtime usage in our public safety. We'll be coming back with some dialogue about that in the future. But as you can see, the other charges were a little bit behind where we were in 2024, but that's because of some accruals and some credits, and that'll even itself out over time. So you can see, if you go all the way down to the bottom, we are about $5.5 million ahead of where we were, or spent less than where we were last year. The biggest reason for that, I will point out, is in your capital outlay area. Last year, we purchased, we had cars coming in that were, that we had ordered during different times during COVID and right at the end, and they showed up. We haven't had that this year. So general fund expenditures by department, as you can see, you go down through the list, again, green, positive, red, negative. Everybody's pretty much right on track. We're doing a little bit better in police, even with the overtime, but that's largely due to vacancies. Same situation in fire. Again, the biggest piece of that fire difference is going to be a piece of apparatus that was purchased last year that has been purchased out of CIP this year. So with that, we have a couple of other things going on. We are working on monthly closures, so we'll be coming back to you at quarterly mileposts to be able to report this back to you. There's a detailed report attached in Granicus that goes through detail, painful detail of all the fund line items and all those. So if you look at that and you have a question, let me know. The next financial report will be with the close of the second quarter, which is the end of December. So hopefully, first of February-ish timeframe, depending upon any open issues or any kind of the, how that process works out for us. It'll be the end of January, first part of February, you'll see that report. The operating budget process will kick off here shortly, so departments will start their development. The strategic planning sessions with SLT are going to be in early December. The strategic planning sessions with council will be in January. Then we'll have the transparency portal is in development. It should be opened up in the next few months. That'll allow residents to drill into our budget and see that detail and be able to self-navigate or be self-guided in their review of our financial information. And then finally, we mentioned earlier, bond proceeds and bond projects. We will probably end up going to the market sometime in the spring. I wanted to get past the market volatility and the higher rates, so thankfully, rates are coming down. Once January has come and gone, then we will see market volatility. Plus, the LGC wants you to have your audit in before you go to issue. So we're in a good spot. We are, we have our cash flow plan in hand, so we're looking at when the best time is for us to go to the market and recoup some of those things, as Doug mentioned earlier. We have reimbursement resolutions in place for, so we'll reimburse ourselves and get a lot of that money back. But we're in the process of planning that with RFA and the LGC. So with that, that's all I have. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Did have one. So the timing of the bond market, interest rates are not as favorable. They're, they're trying to come down a bit. You, you are looking at timing it with that, with.
Yes, sir.
Favorable, more favorable interest rates, right?
Yes, sir. The, as we've had the conversation, as we've been looking at it, the prevailing wisdom is probably late spring, early summer is when those markets are going to be, come back to us a little bit. What we didn't want to do was jump out in the last 18 months, because we would have locked in at a really high rate, probably for 10 years without a callable option. So we wanted to be sure that we hit that, and, and the city has sufficient cash to be able to do that, and it makes more sense for us to sit on our cash than to, and use it for our projects and then reimburse ourselves than it does to borrow at a higher rate.
Gotcha.
All right. See, one councilman pushed his button, but he's not here, so. Okay, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City manager, this question is probably for you. I noticed that the police department is in the red. Did we take into account how much overtime the police department would be using due to the fact that there's shortages?
Yes, sir, we did. We looked at, we looked at historical trend and their staffing levels. With the other things going on, they're a little higher than we had anticipated, and we're, we are watching that in relationship to their vacancy dollars. So what we would do is shift over some of those. But again, as we work our way through the year, some of the things are going to come back to us. So as they get classes and do different things, so we'll be working with the PD. But we did take that into account. It's just outpacing a little bit of what we thought it would be.
Well, let me just elaborate just a little bit. I know that our police department is running probably 21 offices short per shift. I know they're having a hard time getting their days off due to the shortage. Will we be able to use some of that general fund that's at 16% to get it back down to 12% to mitigate that?
If the council would like, and there, we can discuss options to use with that. Obviously, the fund balance, you would not want to use that for an ongoing expense. It would need to be one-time in nature, but.
Because we don't know what it's going to look like next year, so.
Excuse me?
We don't know what it's going to look like yes, next year, so this would be a one-time expense.
And I believe that that would be in the council's purview. I'd encourage you to wait until after the, at least the six-month timeframe, so we have a better picture. As I mentioned, at the first quarter, you really don't have good numbers yet. It's really just kind of hangover from the last fiscal year. So as we get into the second quarter and partially into the third during budget time, we'll have a better handle on that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yates, unrelated, but it is budgetary in, in, in nature. I think this was discussed at the county commission meeting tonight, that there, the, the discrepancy there is between our calculation of what the taxes that we are to remit. Can you hit that a little bit? Because I think they did discuss it at their meeting, so I want to make sure that we understand what's going on on our side.
Yes, sir. The, the city and the county have an agreement in place. The, the city and the county have an agreement in place by which we remit back to our other municipalities as well as the county based on an annexation that occurred years ago, and it's a proportional sharing of the growth. That agreement has been amended multiple times. So historically, what has happened is the county has sent over a worksheet and the city has paid that worksheet, paid that amount, that invoice. One of the things that we did in the last six months is we sat down, pulled all the agreements out, set them side by side, and went line by line through them and recalculated those based on the agreements. What we discovered was, we believe there are some errors in their calculation. So we made adjustment for that. In addition, historically, the agreements occurred before the hold harmless and the changes in sales taxes. When, as we went through that, what we discovered was that the hold harmless amount was being included in the sales tax calculation, which the statutes tell us that the hold harmless amount shouldn't be distributed back to counties, but should remain with the municipalities because the county's got other compensation for that. So this year, as we went to make our overage payment, if you remember back, we had, we were capped at the $22 value. We redid the calculations based on what we believe is an accurate accounting in the agreements, and then also exclusive of the hold harmless, and we remitted that amount as we believe appropriate to the county. The county disagrees. The difference is about 1.6 million, and they have invoiced us for that. And I defer to the manager, if there's anything else that you want to add to that discussion.
No, thank you, Mayor. I thank the county as well. I've been in conversation with my counterpart, Mr. Greer, as late as today, and shared with him, and I shared the email with the council, and those are received. Not only did Jeff provide the information, but we also provided them with our worksheets so that they could understand the calculations. And this is, as I shared with, with Mr. Greer, County Manager Greer, if, if and when we get to the point where there's a meeting of the minds or an understanding definitive that the city owes, then we are prepared to pay that. But as council, as we've discussed even tonight, we always bring you good news or bad news. And I want to thank Jeff and Budget and Finance as well for not assuming that we do as we've always done, that sometimes you've got to pause and take a look at the agreements. And to thank Jeff and his team for that. But Mayor, you are correct, and we have also asked the county if they would like to sit down and discuss that, and we may need your and council's help as well to help facilitate those conversations.
All right, well, look forward to it. Just want to make sure the council was abreast on it, particularly since they discussed it at their meeting, but we understood, so we'll look forward to hearing from them if they don't, can't follow the math, but thank you. All right, council, any other questions for Mr. Yates? All right, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd make a motion that we accept the financial report.
All right, this is motion by Councilmember Thompson, seconded by, give this to Councilmember Hare. He's been seconding all night, and I've missed him a few times. And he's the birthday boy, so we gotta, gotta give him a second on his birthday. All right, so any, any discussion? Council, I'll look to you for votes on receiving the report. All right, motion carries by those voting. And again, happy birthday to our colleague, Councilmember Hare. So when Mr. Matthews said nobody was born in 1959, we got one. So, all right, motion to adjourn, y'all.